You know, we want to be able to really use this as a resource for other things. So indoor soccer, lacrosse, there's some things in here, you know, that we've talked about with being able to bring in some new camps, new teams like double A, triple A teams, which is what Rapid City does, Rapid City has. They brought in two sheets of ice, what was it, about five years ago?
I don't know, eight.
Was it that one? And they were able to bring in some, some, some bigger, more competitive hockey and, and just ice sports in general to Rapid City.
We, we have a lot of kids from Casper and now they go up there to play in the summertime. And what Pat's talking about here is the off-season stuff, because our, there's the high demand, obviously during the winter months for the ice, but then you get to the, like this time of year, there's less demand. And we tried to figure that into our presentation and what our plans are too of how to try and use it year-round.
Um, we'll get into a couple of the, where we came up with some of these figures, but we really looked at this from a, you know, what is the city of Casper losing from a direct impact spending? The, the numbers we got are coming right off of the Visit City of Casper tools that I believe some members of City of Casper use right now to budget and look at things. So that's where these come from. Essentially, we're looking anywhere from about eighty-five to ninety-five thousand dollars in a weekend when we bring in one tournament. That's right now. We're already doing that. That, that money is real. So what's happening is we're down to one of those tournaments for, for youth hockey a year and figure skating one time a year. So we really need to, to change that. This number kind of shows you how that, how we got there. Again, this is essentially, all we can really bring in is about five teams max for hockey. Figure skating, again, it's spectators and visitors, about two-hundred-and-seventy. This number won't quite double for figure skaters, but it'll grow probably about thirty percent. For our hockey, when we have two sheets of ice, we can literally double our tournament size. So you can see what it really does for the direct impact on one weekend, so.
And, and one of the things in showing those couple there, let's see, why, why we showed two, more different ones is that, when we really looked at, we've got the seven standard events on here, we can talk about that more if you want to touch on it.
Oh, go ahead.
So the seven standard events, we, we can gain much more than that as we get known for having the two sheets of ice here. But we really felt like the season right after, or maybe depending on when the ice would come online, it pretty much right away, we could add seven events.
And I think what we're talking about, seven events, sorry, I kind of, I kind of skipped over that. So each one of our age divisions within our group has, you know, a high school, a midget, twelve U, ten U, eight U. That follows along with, with all the other competitive, with all of the USA Hockey within the United States. So each one of those leagues or those divisions will have a tournament. Right now, we're only having one. Figure skaters are only having one. Currently, there's a group of probably about, what, fifty to sixty guys in the active men's league, and there's a group of about twenty of them that are actively traveling around the region playing men's leagues. And again, that's a need that they keep coming back saying, hey, if we had a second sheet of ice, we could bring in our own men's league that's totally separate from youth hockey. Just, it's just a, again, it's just a, a beer league if this is really what you call it.
So it's, we could start out pretty much at that point. One of the things we'll show is that, you know, it gets pretty exciting when you start to look three, four years down the road when we become known for having the two sheets of ice and where we added the two large events in here. Because once you have the two sheets of ice and you've got enough recognition, then you can start bringing in not only five teams, but ten teams. And then your, then your financial gain goes from ninety-five thousand to the hundred-and-sixty-four thousand on there. And you could, figure skating, like Pat was talking about, you can bring in national and regional events that, you know, that are much more significant than just individual competitions.
Uh, you know, again, this is just showing some of the data. It's kind of just backs up, um, this is where a lot of the revenue right now is currently coming into the city for paying for the rink. There are some subsidies and City of Casper is, is obviously offsetting some of those costs, so.
And with that, some of those numbers to keep in mind is, you know, us as an association, a youth amateur association, we would like to spend more money at the rink, but we just basically can't buy more ice because it's not available. So, and, and that goes with figure skating and other user groups as well, is if there were more ice available, then it would be, that number would, that subsidy number would go down.
And that's the point at the bottom there, where you see the expected revenue increase and then the expected maintenance cost increase in, in working with, like Pat said earlier, with the Casper ice arena, with Blue McGrath there, we've, we've worked hand-in-hand with them to try and kind of put the financial, I guess, information together, and that was part of what they had last time. They, we feel very comfortable with the fifty percent increase. It's pretty easy to obtain, even in the, pretty much right off the bat by what Pat was talking about with going, ours going from eighteen to thirty hours of ice time. Every user group is going to grow right, right away essentially. And expected maintenance cost increase is coming from Blue, it's thirty-five percent. So that right there, we have a fifteen percent net gain, which then goes directly to what was their, to cut down the subsidies currently paid by the city.
Uh, you know, again, this is in the packet and, and it's up here. This is a mock-up of kind of the, what Blue and us have come together to, you know, represent, you know, what we're looking at. And I always like to have a visual because I think it really paints the picture. And, you know, right now, this is, this is our current facility. This is the front door. And so this is really a, a model that just pushes off to the side there. And that's our, you know, and obviously this is, you know, conceptual at this point, so.
And a lot of where we went down this path, and I guess, I've been around it just recently, but ever since I've been there, there's been communication that there was already, the land was always set up and planned for two sheets of ice. So, and the, the rink would be there, the cycle one year, and then there's a parking lot to the north of the, it's a dirt lot.
It faces, it's right there by the taxi.
Right, right to the right to the north of the gate.
And that would turn into our parking lot.
And that was always planned to be the parking lot later on, so.
Um, you know, getting into the conceptual design again, you know, really what we'd like to do is, you know, again, this is the current facility, you know, this would be, you know, some sort of demo here with this wall coming out. There'd be a connecting room into this way, filling the bottom space with locker rooms, offices. Again, there's a, we put some bullets on the back of the presentation to kind of really highlight all the stuff that Blue and his team have really put together. You know, and then really, you know, depending on where this goes is a second level. And second level, you know, removing, removable bleachers that can be used with, you know, taken out to, to house like, you know, cross-training, different things during the season, opening it up to the public for different events such as trade shows and those kinds of things.
And another thing they've talked about is actually having an indoor track as well, which would go hand-in-hand with users that are already connected through the rec center to, to this facility. So kind of keep everything under one roof and then hopefully be able to draw in more users, not just to the ice facilities, but as well as the rec center as well.
And I think that it's really important that we kind of, I wanted to make sure we touched base back on that. We understand that there is a huge cost with going forward and that the, the initial investment is large, but the long-term, you know, doubling the cost to, to operate is not double. There's a percentage of that that comes out, but it's the build it, they will come kind of scenario where we have to conceptually try to visualize where we're going to be at after it's done, so.
And one example, like with being able to use this for a dryland training, or we have, right now, with the current ice rink, all, we have, pretty much all teams will be off-site for, like we have, like, we go to Lifetime to do dryland training. We pay to use that facility. We, we do video review, we've done that up at the Y before, that's something. So there's a lot of things that we're, at least us as a club are already doing off-site that then we can bring here, you know, right, right away too.
Paying other places that the money can come back to the city to offset these costs right away, so. Again, that's just the proposal. Um, so, you know, some of the highlights there are just kind of, you know, offices up top and, you know, just some, some private function groups and things like that, so. Walking track, locker rooms, bleachers, all kinds of good stuff, so. Um, so right now, we would be the only, we would be the only facility in the state that actually would have two sheets of ice. So I think that's one thing to, to paint the picture is, is that, one thing that, that really resonates with me, and I hope it resonates with you guys, is we have not hosted state tournament here in, has it been three years? So we put in for state bid, and I understand there's a conflict with wrestling and those things, but we lost state bid last year to Douglas. And Douglas right now is hosting their ice inside of a barn, and they have four man camps that are inside of there that serves as locker room. When the zamboni comes out, it comes off the dirt into the rink and the skates get chewed up. There's no heat inside the rink. I mean, it's, it's, it hits home to me that, you know, here we are in the premier, you know, central of the state, and we have all the hotels, we have all the great restaurants, a huge, you know, great, you know, great community, and we're kind of taking a backseat to our neighboring counties and neighboring cities. And so I really feel like this just puts us on the map for the future. So, and again, just, there's so many different things that we're not working, that we're not doing right now, that a lot of people are paying already to go outside of our community. And we feel like this would be more of a, a community draw where people from around the region will actually come to Casper to use this facility. Again, we have kids right now that are all over the country going to private hockey camps. We have coaches that are going to coach elsewhere during the summer that have grown up in Casper, have come back here. So again, just, you know, something to look forward to down the future in the big picture. Um, go ahead. Um, you know, the next steps really for us, that what we really looked at, and again, you know, is, is just, we, you know, where does this go? We don't, we're not really, we don't have this identified as far as a cost. We have a pretty good idea. You guys can do the math and figure it out. But, you know, some one-set fundies, some one-set funding, community fundraising, private investment. Um, you know, really, we've reached out to a couple of people. There's some economic feasibility case studies, whether or not this is feasible for our demographics. They actually worked with Gillette in putting in their new facility up there. They did work with Rapid City. They're currently working with Colorado Springs. They're working up with the town of, I'll never say it right.
Bemidji.
Bemidji.
Minnesota.
They're doing St. Louis over in Missouri. And so, you know, that's something that the Casper Hockey Club is willing to pay to have that study come in and bring it back to you guys on table, along with hopefully maybe an RFP or an RFQ, and really see what this project would look like on paper and kind of go from there. So, um, again, um, yeah, next. Um, you know, we really just want to build a, a good place for our kids to, to have, you know, a great experience and, and just really just kind of grow this community, so. Any questions? I hope lots, I hope plenty.
Yeah. Um, the current ice arena has sand underneath it, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so what are you looking at? The same thing for this ice arena, or are you thinking different, how it, the ice would be put in?
I believe, and I want to make sure, that with the proposal, with the new ice plant coming down, that sand floor is going to be getting replaced with concrete. And that is all a part of that. One point three million is what you did last fall.
And so the other ones would be the same, then, I'm assuming that?
Yes, yeah.
Both would be concrete bases, so you can melt the ice and use it as, like we have up there, indoor soccer, lacrosse, anything like that. And that's another thing that we actually just found out here a couple of weeks ago that the city already owns overlay boards too, so that you can actually cover the ice if you want to have a temporary event and, and use it for something along those lines as well. Both would have a concrete floor.
I think that'd be great.
The, the dasher boards, which are about half a million dollars, zamboni, with a floor overlay, all that was purchased when Wool made the investment and we put it up at the event center. So all that is sitting at the city's disposal for us to take advantage of.
And one of the benefits to having it in, in here too, versus say that it, there's quite a cost to transition at the event center right now. But like to go from lacrosse to indoor, or to soccer, to, the boards all stay in place. There's not much to transitioning from one sport to the other. I mean, there's still some, but nothing like up there where you're having to completely take the whole structure down and, and put it back up, because the, the boards fit all the sports.
One other question. You mentioned Rapid City has two ice, uh, two ice, right? What, what other state surrounding us has two ice, do you know?
Yeah.
Salt Lake City has, over the entire city, they have five sheets of ice. Denver, I have no idea what they're at, but in the metro area, I know there are at least over fifteen in that area. Colorado Springs has multiple sheets of ice. I don't believe, Bozeman, Montana has two. That's the only city in Bozeman. So there are other facilities or other surrounding cities that do have two sheets of ice and can sustain the, the growth of their.
Billings is adding one.
Billings is adding.
Are they?
Yes.
Okay.
What you're finding right now is, is that there's several communities, you know, around the region and around the US that are, you know, Bemidji's a town of fifteen thousand people and they're getting ready to put in their fifth sheet of ice. But again, it's a little bit, bit different demographic, which is why we felt like it was important to justify what we're doing with this other outside resource coming in and giving us that case study.
Other questions, Mike?
I can't help but ask. You described the facility that they have down in Douglas, which sounds profoundly worse than what we currently have. And the fact that they're choosing to have the state tournament in Douglas instead of here tells me that there's something at play there that's different than just you have some ice as a facility.
And that's correct.
Can you shed any light on that?
So what we, we did play as a state bid this year for our high school age division, which we actually lost to Gillette, and a hundred percent what it boiled down to was our start and end times. We would start playing games at six o'clock in the morning, which means the players have to be there at least by five-thirty to get all their gear on, and our last game would end at eleven PM. So with that, that's why we lost our state bid, is because of the time constraints. As we still have to, we, we understand as a hockey club that we're not the only user group there. So the staff at the Casper ice arena, they still have to accommodate public skating, public sessions to put on, as well as if they're already scheduled in classes. So we have to work around that, and in doing so, we're strapped on the amount of ice time that we can get. And we also would have had to start at ten AM on a Friday, which our, our club is not directly affiliated with us. We don't have a, like a Troy County High School team, we don't have a Kelly Walsh High School team. We do have athletes that do have to get special excuses from their school, and that's throughout the entire state. So we have to work some other boundaries when we're having to pull these kids out of class to host those on, like I said, on, at, at ten o'clock on a Friday morning.
Well, that causes me to wonder if there are some accommodations that can be made in terms of, well, if you want to bring in a big tournament, obviously these other places must be preempting their other activities. Would that be a partial answer to that?
So, yes.
Obviously not an ideal answer.
Yes, most of the, most of the other facilities around the, the state, they don't accommodate like we do to our leisure services. So they'll put a lot of the user group activities to the wayside and let hockey take precedent, which us as an understanding, we know how much of an economic impact that is to our community, but it's still, in the long-term, could hurt once we start pushing our user groups to the wayside and they start losing numbers because it's not consistent for them to, to come and utilize.
And, and I think a little bit of why we kind of brought that up as one example, just because that, you know, right now, we're, we're at least kind of on the same angle as everybody else. But looking at it as, as a big picture, I, one of our big picture thoughts right, is that, I mean, we're the only city in the state with two sheets. I mean, that kind of puts us levels ahead of everybody else. You know, the, there's certainly the growth and the demand that, that on the foundation supports the two sheets, but, you know, when you really, I get excited, I guess, about the opportunity to be the only. And we've got a, a big benefit of, just from our geography, to draw people in here. And, you know, with, if we were to be able to claim being the only city in Wyoming with two sheets of ice, Gillette has a sheet and a half ice, but it, it really puts us out front and, and gives us a pretty significant competitive advantage.
Steve?
Well, and back to what Councilman Huber was saying, I think that when we start talking about communities like Douglas and them being able to preempt events that they have going on, we're talking the difference of a community of six thousand people compared to a community of sixty thousand people, and the amount of activities and clubs we have going on here compared to smaller communities, you're not talking, it's easier for the, correct me if I'm wrong, but it would be easier for the smaller communities to, to make time, ice time compared to what we have going on here.
Chris?
I think that these types of sporting events, just like the high school tournaments and that kind of thing, do bring in, well, one of the biggest chunks of money for event type issues. And all comes down to the bottom line, and I can't see what that is. What, what are we talking here for money?
That was my question. You, you folks have done some homework on who has built new sheets of ice and built new buildings. I assume you've looked at cost figures and can you give us any rough ideas of what we're talking about here?
Well, I mean, we had those numbers in, and obviously I don't like to put those in and scare people because, you know, we, we really wanted to get a good feel. I mean, roughly, you know, two hundred dollars a square foot, you know, at fifty-five thousand square foot, you're looking at roughly eight to nine million dollars. I'm not sure if that's what it's going to cost. I really don't. You know, it, again, you know, if we follow the same contour as City of Casper, you know, the facade with the brick, you know, that's obviously a lot more money. You know, we kind of, we're thinking something with some steel building, you know, you know, probably a third of it and the other two-thirds, you know, a third of it brick and two-thirds of it steel building, and, and we can reduce some of those costs. I think that one of the things that would help us lower these costs as well is, again, having it implemented in phases, because there is a certain amount of work that's going to go into that, and I don't know as if we would need to do all of it at once either. Um, and again, I think that, you know, building it out, putting in the bottom floor, getting in locker rooms and, and what we really need to have, have it functional, great. Then the next phase would be build a, build a second floor, get in the bleachers, maybe the running track and, and all those other things that obviously add another level of cost.
Did I interrupt?
No, I just. I don't know if that was, I don't know if that's helpful or not.
Well, that's very helpful.
The, the case studies that I have done, so there's a, it's called King and Associates, and I'm, and I'm happy to forward that as an email as a reference, or we can come back with him or whatever. They're working with Colorado Springs right now, building two sheets of ice down there. The land was given to them, so taking the land out, same as in this scenario. They're looking at fourteen million for two sheets of ice on the same ground, but basically two complete separate buildings. Um, I believe Bemidji was six million, and then right now, they're working right now on a big project in St. Louis.
And, and with those numbers too, we have to keep in mind that they're adding a purchase of compressor, purchase boards, so there could be, you know, anywhere from a million to maybe two million dollars in cost savings off of those figures. But really, until we get a legitimate case study done for our demographic and specific to our region, it's hard to pinpoint the exact number.
From, from dirt to ice, the average is, is basically right around six and a half million, and that's, you know, assuming there's no compressor, there's no dasher boards, which again, there's, you know, you're looking at some pretty huge numbers there.
Yeah, I think, and that's.
Don't, don't, please. What are we voting to move forward on here?
Well, I think we're, we're just hearing the case, so I don't know that we have a, an agenda as such, just to see if we want to learn more about, I think, what it would involve.
Mr. Mayor, do you know if I take a crack at that?
Yeah, why don't you go ahead, Carter. It does say direction, direction requested, so we'll have to decide something here as to whether we want to even learn more about this.
Thank you, thank you. To, to your question, Councilman, if, if council is interested in looking into this further, I, I like the idea of looking into some sort of research piece that allows us to see what's like a business plan with regard to not only what our physical plant investment would be, but what we can really truly anticipate in terms of, of potentially a fifty percent revenue increase, if that's possible, and what the maintenance costs are going to be over time and, and those kinds of things. I think you should know all that data before pulling the trigger on making a, a, a project decision one way or the other. And so if it pleases the council and, and, and you have enough interest to direct us to do that, I'd, I'd like to talk to the, the group here about the funding that they offered to make available for that kind of study. I think it's important that the city be the client with regard to that kind of study and see what the numbers indicate.
So we would get a study on a plan, complete phase plan, and the economic impact forecast at least?
Revenue forecast, maintenance expectations and that forecast, yeah, I think so.
I'd be, I'd be happy with that.
Kristen, go ahead, Stan.
Go ahead.
The one thing I was going to say is, I think it helps to kind of step back and remember, we're not just talking about hockey, like these guys said. There is a mad race in the state right now for indoor soccer space. And I'm talking like, it is a really big deal. There are places that are just throwing up like pole barns basically, because indoor soccer is such a need here where they can't play outside. And so, I mean, there are other huge segments that would, and I know that you guys touched on it, but I think it just doesn't hurt to say it again, it's not just an ice sheet. It would have an enormous amount of year-round use.
Steve?
So I'll just kind of summarize why I brought this up in the first place. First of all, the city has the dasher boards, we have the compressing unit, it's getting moved anyways. It only makes sense to relocate a second sheet of ice down there. So realistically, everything except for the building itself, we have. There is a huge need for this, and, and what we're showing here tonight as far as the scheduling goes, I'll tell you, is, my kid just graduated this year, but as a senior, he's getting off the ice ten forty-five at night, coming home, he's on about eleven fifteen and back up at six AM to go to zero hour class, and that's ridiculous. I mean, there's just, kid's not getting any sleep. And that happens a lot with a lot of different user groups. The, and you can't start, and I mean, even if you had open space during the, the day prior to three o'clock, kids are in school. So we're utilizing every moment that we possibly have. And this isn't even an impact from the Coyotes or the Bobcats. That has nothing to do with any of the, the week time stuff that takes place. I think when we look at the building itself, yeah, I mean, we could talk eight million dollars, but at the same time, good, better and best is the way I would look at it, and that's the way I'd want to look at it. You know, what can we get away with to house this sheet of ice and what's that expense going to be? And ultimately, in the end, you know, what's, what's the best going to cost us? But at the end of the day, a second sheet of ice is needed, and even if we just went with good and that, that didn't cost us hardly anything, it's a needed, it's a needed thing, so.
Well, and the, the study or proposal that, that we would be given the approval to go head on would give us those options. And I'm not, and I don't want to build bare minimum. I mean, if we're going to build this, then it has to be something that's going to sustain for a long time. It does, I like the multi-use thing, but the practicality of that, you know, how often it would actually be multi-use, because it would primarily be ice. So I think we need to also keep a focus on that.
I, I would like to just throw out too, really quick, not to interrupt, but when we originally talked with Tim and brought it to his light, you know, we were really under the impression last year that we were going to have to go out and build our own sheet of ice as a club. And we were reaching some, some members of the community within our club, within the community that we know, that were willing to put in some, some serious money to help us get that leverage, you know, go find a facility, put in the ice. So with that being said, at the very beginning of my presentation, we want to partner with the city. So if that means us coming up with ten percent down for us to kick this off, we're willing to do that. And I, and I just want to make sure that you guys understand that that's our level of commitment. In this economic feasibility case study, it's about fifteen to twenty thousand dollars. So we have those funds already allocated, sitting there waiting for us to pull the trigger on this with you guys allowing us to do that.
Ken?
Last, I agree with, with it. I mean, we, our goal number one is enhance attractiveness of the community, and something like this is going to do just that. So looking further into it, I, I'd like to see that.
When we did the second, when we did the ice at the event center, that, this was the same argument. We thought incorrectly that it was. When we did the second, when we did the ice at the event center, that, this was the same argument. We thought incorrectly that it was going to give us ice time for our user groups. And the scheduling just didn't make that possible, so the demand was there even then. And hindsight's 2020, this would have been the right way to go then, but we didn't, so. I'm in favor of doing it, I think we should do the study for sure, but I think we also have to be mindful of the fact that, you know, as a council here. We have inherited certain obligations from previous councils as far as all of the subs, the facilities that we are currently subsidizing. And so, we just have to be mindful, I think, that we want to be sure that we don't saddle our, those who follow us with additional burdens with those subsidies. So let's make sure that these, these studies pencil out and, and I, I mean, to me, a great model to follow would be what we did with the station. Which was, you know, fifty percent private money. And so, the city played a significant role in kickstarting that and creating an atmosphere where it was clear to the private investors that if they came forward, it was going to happen. But that's great to hear that you guys have already been trying to develop some privacy for this. Maybe some naming rights, some other things that, you know, could help with that. So, I, do we have a thumbs up for giving these guys the okay to find out more information and coming back to us?
Great.
Be a wonderful thing for the community.
We really appreciate your time.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
I've already got that on here, so.
Okay.
You might save that for other show tele.
Okay.
Thank you guys for your commitment to, to the kids in our community.
Those are cheap to build.
Thanks, appreciate it, thank you.
It's 2019, I do things on computers.
Never know when your electricity goes out, you wanna read it, and you're not gonna be able.
Battery packs.
Trail project options, one cent number sixteen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The council requested some opportunity to review the prospectus, if you will, that the trails group has put together and would recommend for your approval. In regards to capital needs, the trail system has, and the ways in which they'd like to, to use the one cent sixteen funding. That council allocated through the one percent process that took place a few months back. Another aspect of this, however, that's a little different is in, compared to years past, is with regard to the maintenance funding that council also authorized. This is effectively a new relationship or a new phase of our relationship, if you will. A relationship of which has spanned a number of years as that picture might allude to here on the screen. We are hoping that with regard to the additional tranche of funding that would be available through this, that indeed. Maintenance would become a lively portion of this relationship as well. What we're hoping for, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, is that indeed, if council needs more information, this would be the night that we could either. Mine that information or be directed to seek additional information, otherwise, we hope that we can get the thumbs up, move forward on the preparation for, of a contract. And then bring that contract forward through the formal process and approve on the floor.
Questions for Carter?
Yeah, is this, are these numbers in this document consistent with what we budgeted for one cent sixteen?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Hopkins, it is, and I think Angela could probably go through that in some detail if council is.
Angela, there you are. Would you like to tell us a little more about what you have planned, and I know you had it in the packet, but let's take a few minutes anyway and go over.
Absolutely, Mr. Mayor, thank you and members of the council, thank you for this opportunity to come here tonight and speak with you about our optional one cent number sixteen plans for the next four years. We did submit a grant application as we have done for many, many years, which I believe you did review within your, the process of oversight for one cent number sixteen. So this photograph does date back to nineteen sixty-eight. This was the original steering committee that was empowered by the City of Casper. That is kind of the precursor to the Flat River Trails organization. So we have been working to help build our community's non-motorized trails infrastructure for over forty years. So, we are a, we are a nonprofit five oh one C three organization. We were organized in nineteen eighty-two as such. Although we received number one cent funds as early as nineteen seventy-nine, so this would be our fortieth year to receive one cent funds. So here's what we do. We write grants and raise matching funds. We write grants to programs like the Y dot TAP program. We write them to other entities, private funders, corporations, organizations here in our community, like in the Trona County Joint Powers for Recreation, Joint Powers Board. We work closely with City of Casper staff on prioritization and implementation of trails projects. The two photos you see here are, the top is the latest Casper Mountain Road project, this is phase one. The lower project is our underpass at Fort Casper. That project, we raised over one hundred and fifty thousand dollars of private money to fund this one million dollar project. Other things that we do, we manage and help maintain the Flat River Trail. We have our own employee. The money to pay that person comes from an endowment fund that we hold with Wyoming Community Foundation, and we receive dividends from that. And that pays for our maintenance employee, Sherry Cole, as well as maintenance equipment and doggy do bags, et cetera. We also serve as the fiscal agent for the Respect Our River Committee, so this is a committee I think you're all familiar with. I know Councilman Hopkins is. We, many of our board members and I, when asked, do serve on city committees as needed. I'd like to back up and recognize David Huford, Bruce English, who are here with me tonight. David is our vice president of our board, and Bruce English is a former president. Apologize for not doing that. Also, what we do, we organize programs that support trail safety, non-motorized travel, as well as health, wellness and quality of life. We're about to kick off a trail safety campaign on Friday at our First Food Truck Friday. And then on Saturday, we have a fun event called Caught Being Courteous. We'll have Casper Police Officers, Flat River Trails Board members. And volunteers will be out on the trail, and when they see someone doing something right, i.e. dog on the leash, helmet, a bike helmet on, staying to the right. They'll be given some free goodies like bike bells, t-shirts, dog treats, et cetera. We also partner with other groups, whoops. And below, Walk with the Dog is a program we're partnering with Wyoming Medical Center and the Natrona, Natrona County Health Assessment Group. Walk with the Dog kicks off next Monday, the seventeenth, weekly for twelve weeks, encouraging use of the trails and health and wellness for citizens of our community. So we do have a four-year plan. This was in our grant application from twenty eighteen, and I explained in, also in my memo to you most recently. These are our four areas that we'd like to focus on. We show you four areas here because we, we do actively go out and try to raise money to leverage our one cent funds. And we would hope that if we're more successful than not, that we might be able to move down to some of these other projects. So just quickly, at the top of our list is Paradise Valley to Robertson Road, via a bridge across the river. Bike lanes for the first part, then we'll reach a city lot where we'll cross the river and then arrive at the Robertson Road Trail that is existing now. If we're successful and we raise lots of money, we'd like to move on to the Project Walmart for Casper. This year in twenty nineteen, we're about to kick off a new trail that'll create a connection between the Morad Park Bypass Trail up to the Walmart Shopping Center. Safely allowing people to kind of access the River Trail from the Wolf Creek neighborhood if they can make their way over to Walmart. But our great goal is to really get deeper into that neighborhood and connect to a school, connect to the affordable housing area that's there, as well as senior housing that's there. If we are super successful, we'll move on to another project, which would be to further, go further west into that area off Robertson Road. There are as many as five thousand residents on the west side of Casper. Casper's west side sometimes feels like it's been neglected. And as you can see, many of our projects here in this next four years are focused on Casper's west side. If, again, we're super successful, there are some other low-hanging fruit, one of which is the Yesnes Pond Trail area. We do use trail counters, and we can tell you that that is a very highly-used area, drawing people all along the Poplar Street corridor, people south of Wyoming Boulevard. So, this is kind of a laundry list of projects we wanted to present to you in case we have the best-case scenario and are super successful. As Mr. Napier mentioned, city staff did approach us at the end of twenty eighteen about the possibility of our board partnering with city staff. To identify repair, replace and connection projects, community-wide along our trails. We really, we've been talking to the city actually for many years about the condition of the Flat River Trail, our River Trail. Some of the sections are over thirty years old, and they're, they're ready to be repaired, if not replaced. So, we look forward, we've already started working with Tim Cortez and his staff at identifying the top needs. We, my board is excited about taking on this new responsibility, so I would tell you that what we've identified now. Is major maintenance of the River Trail is at the top of our list. We've broken it down into several different areas. Some of those areas are on hold due to other circumstances. However, we've identified them and we'll get on them as quickly as we can and other circumstances allow. We'll also continually be looking at maintaining trails citywide. The Parks Department and Tim Cortez staff, they keep track of the condition of trails, so we are aware of that. Those documents and that data, and we can go out even, and we have done, go out onsite and look at them personally. Last, I would say, as a part of this funding that Mr. Napier and city staff came to us with, is that we also hope that we could take a look at ensuring there's correct connectivity. Because we can maintain, absolutely, that's first priority, we can repair, but we also need to continue to make sure that people can connect and get to the trails safely. We know that citizens, non-motorized transportation infrastructure is important to the citizens of Casper. You can see this, and you've seen this graphic before. And I would say, and I'm not sure what happened to my other slide that was in there twice, but seems to be gone. We are a nonprofit board, we look forward to working with you, and we, I would love to entertain any questions you might have.
Questions for Angela? Chris?
I use the trails quite a bit, and I like them. And we have some very fantastic ones. I question the need for the concrete trails and the eleven-foot one. Over the blacktop.
Yes. Well, Councilman, concrete is the preferred material by city staff. It has a longer lifespan. And when the debate comes up within city engineering, concrete is the standard, the gold standard. You would see that we did go with asphalt on the Casper Mountain Road Trail because there are no trees there. So tree root issues don't really come into play. However, concrete is really the preferred, it's, it's, it's what the city engineering department prefers that we use. And the cost is not as, the gap between concrete and asphalt is not as wide as it once was. There still is, you know, concrete is still a bit more, but not as much more as it was, once was.
And I, I think we're around sixty bucks a linear foot for the concrete, right?
Yeah.
And what would it be for blacktop?
I would, I would, no, I don't know. Yeah, I could find out for you.
Well, my, my question is, what if we went with blacktop, we, and had the, and we're looking at one point five million, right?
Well, there are different pots of this money, the half a million of it is funding that city staff suggested we. Have a role in allocating over a four-year period. So that is a pot, eight hundred thousand for projects and two hundred thousand for overhead, yes sir.
I'm just wondering, if we, if we had blacktop, do we build more?
Well, you know.
And do we lose that much?
Yes, sir, that's a great question, and personally, I always ask the question, is asphalt appropriate in this setting? And I did ask it for the Casper Mountain Road project. City engineering accepted it, said, yes, asphalt would be appropriate in this setting. But not all settings do I think city engineering feel that asphalt is appropriate. And I rely upon engineers, city engineers, who work hand-in-hand with the city engineering department. So I am not an engineer, but, you know, cost is definitely something that's important to us. But also, long-term maintenance is important, and so if you get a thirty-year product versus a fifteen-year product that you're continuing to have to maintain. Seal, crack or do an overlay, I'm not sure the cost savings is really there.
Yeah, I see where you're coming from, I just, we don't do it on our roads predominantly, so.
Right.
Our paths are better than our roads, so that's where I start to get the questions, and so that's what I always tease Tim about whenever we're not in an official setting.
I could add to that, just real quickly, Mr. Mayor, Councilman, appreciate the question. A lot of it is vegetation. A lot, a lot of it's the vegetation that runs concurrent to the trails versus city streets, we're, just don't have them, so we see a lot of falling, and then asphalt starts to kind of deteriorate around the edges and stuff. And before, you know, it was crumbling on the edges, and then our weather patterns and the lack of proper drainage in a lot of trail areas, those are, it's the weight of water, the wind. They just get broke down faster. I think that the fifteen-year versus a thirty-year lifespan is probably, or the engineering department probably comes from largely, but that's certainly.
Questions? Mike?
I appreciate the improved longevity of concrete over asphalt, but following along with Councilman Ross. I really like the gravel up around, it's just fun. I like the sound of it under my feet, it makes me feel like I'm on the concrete, so, so don't mess with that.
I understand.
Well, I appreciate the focus on the west end, because you're right, we have a lot of people who really just don't have access to the system, or easy access to the system. And I want to credit Councilman Hopkins.
We want to get across the river.
Who was the one who first, first suggested that that would be the launching point for our bridge, and it's been plotted to allow for that, so. If we can secure funding, it was a little intimidating when we first looked at the cost of that bridge. I don't know what it's looking like now, but. If we can get over that bridge and get these people access, that would be a really good thing.
Is the bridge gonna go across where the trail ends now, at Paradise Valley?
Yes, it will be able to connect directly to, so the trail, you know, a portion of the trail that goes in front of Oregon Trail School is there. And then at Fort Waschukue Street, there's an at-grade crossing, and then the trail then continues further north on the east side of Robertson Road. So someone coming over off the bridge will then take the at-grade crossing, and then eventually, they can, they can go towards Oregon Trail, or they can go north towards the neighborhoods there.
On the east end, it's River Bend Road, Indian Trail, to the old, what was it again, Bob? Was it, was it, was it old?
The, the original property?
Yeah, well, yeah, it was a.
It was actually, there's about, as I recall, two and a half, three acres there. It was actually the original sewage treatment plant for Paradise Valley.
That's what I remember, yeah.
And now we have the landing on the other side of it that's big enough for a landing for a bridge.
Right. There's some issue with the right-of-way for the power line.
There's, there'll have to be some power lines moved or gone underground, but that's, that's something that has to be engineered when we go to do it. And it could be just taller poles, just to get more clearance.
Well, I was on the trail yesterday, and getting to that concrete was nice, 'cause it, it does get, it, some of those sections are pretty warm, and it's a bumpy ride. And I do like the additional width, I mean, when you've got somebody with three dogs and you're on your bike, and, and the trail is, you know, eight feet wide. They can do their best to hold on to them, but it's still, there's still safety issues.
Yes, sir.
You don't have room for everybody.
I would agree with you, and the standard of the ASHTO, which is the. And the standard, the ASHTO, which is the national standard for trails now, is ten feet wide, so any, any kind of trail project that receives federal funding must follow those guidelines for the ten-foot wide.
Well, Vice Mayor Johnson's always in favor of those, that federal assistance, always.
If I could add, something Angela, one of the projects that we have on the table is to, in North Casper, and we received input that the citizens of North Casper would like to have better connectivity through various means, but, so one of the projects we have, maybe Dave can explain it better, from Marion Freiner Park, correct, over to the soccer fields.
That was one that we talked about with 1% 15 monies and that is the current, it is, in a way, that I understand, for going from the end of M Street, east to where County Field is and then down and connect with the new path that's going to replace the one on the north side of the soccer fields. It is in really rough shape because of the tree roots, as Tim had indicated, along that asphalt path. We're looking at possibly going west from M Street and make the connection through a river, Bu Park, all the way to Matt Campbell Park. So, that's something that we have discussed and are on our way with this current project that's out for bid right now.
That'd be nice for the boys and girls club.
Yes.
Because they've got a lot of kids and they've got bikes and, that would be cool. While you're here, is, it's been a while since I've looked at the long-range plan. Is, is there some plan eventually to pave the railroad from Curtis all the way out to EKW?
Mr. Mayor, thank you for asking that question. Flat River Trails has been working very closely with the Rails to Trails Conservancy on a large-scale project to create a trail from Washington DC to Washington State, part of which will travel right through Wyoming and through Casper. We, Flat River Trails, is working on our portion from here to Edmonds Kimball Wilkins and maybe assisting other communities like Glen Rock and Douglas to, to work on their sections as well. We have been trying to raise money privately for that. I did receive a phone call from the Rails to Trails folks last week. They have a large donor that might be poised to help us with the trail from here to EKW. So, David Huff and Bruce English have both been very involved with the planning of that and we will, you know, keep it posted and we hope that we can deliver something that's very special to this community and eventually to the state.
Is there a local Rails Conservancy group or are you referring to a national group?
We, we are working directly with the national group. They came out a couple of years ago and they are, you know, in direct contact with us, you know, weekly. So, we're, you know, my board feels strongly that it could be something, be really big and a game changer for our community to bring this kind of tourism to, to the city.
If I might add, Charlie, it would probably be, if I'm correct, a soft-surface trail. There's so much linear foot distance out there, so the initial phase would be try to get the right-of-ways all established and of course, most of it's on the Rails to Trail, getting right into Edmonds Kimball and there's always little gutches in there that we're working on, but first phase would be soft-surface and maybe paid at some point in time, you know, certainly a well usable soft-surface trail. Mike would like it.
Other, other questions for these good folks? Once again, thank you all for your efforts.
Well, Loder, if you could have that crunchy gravel sound effect.
I can download on your phone.
Well, it is more efficient, a lot of runners prefer, we have a lot of input and a lot of trails in the nation have a dual system where they have a soft-surface trail right parallel to the hard-surface trail for those that prefer that. And of course, it takes twice the room, but, and we, we've considered some soft-surface trails in some other areas, because there is a, a demand for it, people like them.
It's easier to run.
Scorch it.
Well, thumbs up for use of the 1 cent number sixteen money as the trust has planned? We're all good? Thank you guys.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Onto fireworks safety. It's that time of year, isn't it, Mr. City Manager?
Oh, boy, yes, it is.
That exciting?
But I bet we'll catch up, I bet we'll catch up a little bit on our agenda here.
The birth of our nation. There should be some excitement about that.
Let me just keep that in perspective.
Mr. Mayor, council requested that we have a conversation about fireworks and the potential for ground display level fireworks within our community and so forth. You saw a memo in your packets from your fire department and of course, as you would, you know, potentially expect, they have concerns about releasing the ban, if you will, that's currently in place throughout the county to allow those kind of things in the city limits of the city. And so, regardless, we are here tonight to answer any questions you might have and entertain whatever direction you would like to see the community take.
Okay. So, of course, I propose, and so sorry to throw that at you guys last week, so I, I went through and if you'll pass this on down. Should, there's one for you. So, I went through and I was looking at other states, I was looking at other towns in Casper or I mean, towns in Wyoming. And I put, I propose, this is just an idea. I mean, we can table it to whatever we, whatever you guys think, I guess, but my idea initially was just for ground fireworks that shoot on, that are state on the ground, that is within a cement pad or a dirt plot of eight feet by eight feet, water source 10 feet away. On the back, you guys, there's one that what Lander does and what they approve of as far as that goes, their amendment that I attached. They have had very minimal fires ever from fireworks. When I was taught, trying to look stuff, Arizona, which is really dry, on the very back gives you an idea of like what is permitted year-round and I kind of like the idea of, you know, you got those people that want to do a wedding in winter and maybe want to do the sparklers as the wedding couples running down. They can't in Casper. It's completely 100% illegal, obviously. The little poppers that you pull the string and it pops, that's illegal in the state of Wyoming or in Casper. The little white things that you throw on the ground and it snaps at your feet, illegal in this city of Casper. Despite, we have stores that sell these things, all of it. Walmart sells even the bottle rockets and you can buy a whole tall thing of different fireworks every year. That's illegal for possession, illegal to fire, illegal in every way, but they still sell it. So, I guess, and then it's been since 1980 or before 1980 that no fireworks have ever been allowed. Now, fireworks we know go off every single year and I don't know how many fires take place every single year necessarily. They have, if you guys read your packet, on here, 2014 fireworks, four, 2015, six, 2016, five, 17, three. None of that is necessarily on the Fourth of July, they just, it was caused by fireworks. People shoot them off anyways. Our fire department, I'm guessing dispatch is probably called more during the Fourth of July than maybe any other time of the year. I'm just assuming and we all know about assuming, but about this person shooting this person and that, and the fire department police are running their tails off trying to prevent whatever. If we allowed just ground fireworks on cement pad or dirt plot, no aerials, A, I think that would lessen the vol, call volume and then the focus can be on those that are aerials only, that are more dangerous, that are incredibly dangerous, and I believe that. So, I, I'm really strongly for us allowing, people talked about PTSD. Fireworks go off anyways on Fourth of July. There was one guy that commented on my Facebook that said, "I have PTSD. I have it really bad, but I know the precautions that I need to take for that on Fourth of July and my PTSD is for the freedom and that freedom was to fire, be able to celebrate your Independence Day." And I, that was really cool of him. Other people talked about their dogs. My dogs bark, they go crazy, it drives them nuts, it tears up my house. It happens anyways on Fourth of July. People are still shooting them off, no matter what. I think less problems, less concerns may come in if we would allow at least the ground fireworks. Somebody comes in town and has awesome displays of ground fireworks, that's going to bring in a profit to a point to us. We want people outside of our town, outside of our state, wanting to come in to our city, spend money in our city. This is just one more aspect, in my opinion, to say, "Hey, we want you guys here, here's what we do compared to all the other cities." I think we open a door of a lot more. Yes, a fire could happen and any home being burnt down is the worst thing in the world and that's not what I would want to see in any way, shape, or form, but I do want to see people also celebrate their independence and have fun. I think what I propose, I'm going to put down, if you guys caught on there, that Mimica Tash Charter to be allowed, year-round, under the guidance fire restriction set by the fire chief in the yellow section, but in here talks about even if the fire chief says, "Hey, yo, we got too dry of a gear, we cannot do any type." Great, it's already in there. He says no, council says no, they can't. But I mean, it gives an opportunity to allow it, so I, I did a lot of, I, I really hope council will see that this is a good thing, not a bad thing. I don't know who was first, Mike?
Perfect. That, that was coordinated.
Mike, Bob, and Chris?
I think.
Okay, in that order, go ahead.
Yeah. I can't see any possible reason for doing what Councilman Bates is advocating for. Oh, and I appreciate that you're sincere in your advocacy. I questioned this ban, this county-wide ban supposedly, having been back to 1980. I don't think it goes back that far. I can remember when that, you know, when we did, still did have fireworks here in Trona County and the fire calls were just through the roof on the Fourth of July. And the idea that you're going to be able to discern that, well, this is a little ground popper versus a something else, that's, you know, that's not, that's not real workable either. The, the, the number of fire calls that we used to have when there was more wide-open fireworks in the Trona County was, it was just astronomically decreased and acreage burned every year. It was just astronomically decreased. The number of, you know, hours being out all night long fighting these fireworks, those fires, is, just went way, way, way down. And I think that Tim could probably talk about your experience back to when you were with the VLM, I think would, might bear this out too. And, you know, yeah, it happens now, but if you think it happens now, open the door up and then it's really going to happen. Bob? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I, believe me, when I was young, I blew a lot of stuff up with fireworks. We had them all doing it. But I really believe the ban is reasonable and quite honestly, when I lived out west of town a little ways, we had a lot of our neighbors, even though they were banned out there, there was a lot of little fires and one of the things that really isn't brought up by the number of fire calls is a number of calls that come into ER, medical, Sage Medical Guys, for people with burn hands and things like this. And I, I just, I just would rather stand pat where we are and just keep doing it like we are. I know there's things that happen, that people are breaking the rules, but I, I tend to agree that if we do open the floodgates, we would literally open the floodgates.
Chris?
Seems to me, the way I remember it, and this, it's probably been changed with just adoption of a different type of code since I was on the PD, that everything in this green was authorized, the sparklers, the smoke, the, uh.
Poppers?
The poppers. Does that sound right, Tim?
I give yes.
So, like fires? Councilman, I think the iterations that we've seen have now encapsulated, because what you'll find is the, the smoke bombs and maybe not the poppers, but the little snap and pops, they still throw out a spark. In, in our area climate and with our wind that we're all very familiar with, it, you know, I think as a, you know, on fire department or with VLM or whatever, everything, the snakes, they still emit a fire, I mean, they still get very hot, sparkly, burn up 2,000-plus degrees. I mean, the injury aspect of it all, I think, comes into play. So, we incorporated it in and didn't discern different things, kind of the councilman you were pointing, meaning what is what, you know, and what is a ground firework versus something that, to us, if it emitted sparks, fire hazard, it got encapsulated. Does that answer your question?
Well, yeah, I mean, we incorporated that in maybe in the last five years. Is that what you're thinking?
It's always been that way since I was the fire marshal before then, is those things came into, came out on the market and stuff, we had a fireworks policy covered and all. And then when the, and then it also falls in line with when the county, usually the lead that we would take with the burn bans that Councilman Bates referred to, we would usually take their lead, mainly when they would establish the fire ban, county-wise, we as a city would say, "Let's get it all in line and let's be the same." So, I can't tell you what chicken and egg, but we've always been kind of in line with the county as well.
I'm just wondering if the, the fire chief knows what the effect is in Riverton, Lander, when they, in Evanston, I know those turn into free fire zones on the Fourth.
Chief?
No. Mayor, Councilman, I, I don't have specific information on, on those communities. I know I've asked and, and again, we just kind of look at the odds of what's going on in Wyoming and there are several differences throughout the state, but again, we kind of focused on our information.
Thank you. Any other questions, Chris?
Has anybody else been to Lander on the Fourth of July? So, first things first, if you've ever been to Lander, it is much, much more of a wet environment than it is here, like the ground's always like sopping and mushy and it's just a wet place. But the other thing is, Lander know, like Lander does this on purpose. They do this to bring people. It is on lockdown. Everyone is shooting off every kind of firework imaginable. It is a madhouse, but my point is like they plan on this and like they've prepared for this and they're doing it on purpose to bring people. There are fire trucks everywhere, basically surrounding the town. They have people that go up on like the higher vantage points to watch for fires. They have like specific stations, like of the big like water drugs and granted, they also allow open bottle in city limits on Fourth of July, so when I say free-for-all, it's a free-for-all, like, but my point is, it's different because they are very specifically careful and they know that the reward of bringing in like the tourism and the things for that like has the risk. Casper's obviously. Casper's obviously much, much bigger than Lander. I mean, it is, obviously, they probably work with neighboring communities and neighboring fire departments and things of that nature in order to create that barrier around the city. And I'm sure that's taken many, many years to, like, nail down. Uh, my in-laws live a little ways out of town, kind of up, and so we watch it. A teeny, tiny, like, you'll tell, like, there's a fire or something going on, it's, it's gone, it's done. Because they've planned this, they've gone through the different years, they've figured out how to make this work. Casper's just so much bigger. It's long, it's narrow, it's... I mean, I know that we're talking about just ground fireworks, I know that we're not talking about like people shooting off like the big Starburst, um. A little fire could get real big real quick, though. I mean, if it takes, if there's hundreds of calls coming in, and there's only so many people to get to calls and timing-wise, and, I mean, safety's a big, big concern to remember.
One thing I wanna point out is, we're talking about the city, and I'm talking about private property owners for the most part. I'm talking about on your property, on a cement pad, or gra- dirt, just dirt, ground fireworks. That's it, that, that, I'm not talking about outside of county, because I agree. I lived in towards Barnum and Wardwell, and you shot off in the grass field right across the street, and oh my gosh, it was gonna go up in flames in a heartbeat. Um, I'm also talking about on Fourth of July, depending on the weather, depending on the moisture of the ground, depending on what the chief of the police feel, or, uh, fire department feels that, is it too much? And again, like I said, people are doing it, anyways, if we open a, not a huge door, we open a small door and allow this, if it, if after a year it fails, we can extend it again. But why do the same thing that we've always done since nineteen eighty according to what the document said and what pe- what I've read? Why not take a step out once and see what will happen? And if in the future council can change it, they can alter it, they, we can fix it and work with it once. But to, well, this is the way we've always done it, this is the way we're gonna do it, because this is what has happened in the past, and we don't wanna take any risk in any way, shape, or form at all. You know, we, we have to in some point in ti- I think we should in some point in time. I'm not asking for bottle rockets or the giant ones that shoot out, which people are gonna do anyways. We know that they will, as it happens, I've watched it from Washington Park all over the city doing it. I'm asking for the little fountain that shoots up, or the sparkler so kids can write their name in the dark, on their own private property, on their property. So if their property, their house burns out, it's on them. Not that I want that to ever happen, but it's them, or people that they invited. So, I just, I, I understand everybody's concern, but, uh, you know.
Kristen, and I'm not gonna have to decide over there. Oh, I'm sorry.
I think Steve might be able to.
Go ahead.
The only thing I was gonna say is, and mostly just because it's easy for words to get, um, I don't know how, anyways, just because people are going to do it anyways, unfortunately, I don't think is a good enough argument. Heroin's illegal, people are still gonna do it anyways. Just 'cause they're doing it, I doesn't think, I don't think that changes it. I know that's not what you're intending to say, I think it just, that's one of those things that kinda becomes a, a bumpy road. If we're just saying, well, people are doing it anyways, people are gonna do illegal things no matter what. Um, and the only other thing I'd say too is, I don't think it's just, I don't think we're saying that it should stay just because that's how it's always been. I, I don't think that's the intention. I think one life loss is too many, one injury is too many. It's not about not taking risks, it's not about, let's just do it, 'cause this is how we've always done it. Human life is just as horrible in nineteen eighty as it is today. And so I think it just, it's not just because we're saying, let's do it how it's always been, we're saying there might be a reason that it's always been this way.
Now, the other thing I was gonna say is, you talk about just opening the door a little bit, the door's closed right now, and they still do it. And still opening, that's not gonna change anything. And I, and I have to agree that, you know, it's, uh, we know what it did before. For years, there's been fires that have started because of this, and, and, uh, you're gonna have fires again if you open it back up.
Within the city.
There's grass in the county, there's grass in the city, and even if you tell people to put it on an eight-by-eight concrete pad, or, or, it's not gonna, you can't contain sparks on an eight-by-eight pad. If there's grass next to it, wind comes up, whatever it might be, there's all different elements that are gonna, that are not gonna contain it on that one area. And then you end up having fires. And then on top of that, part of your proposal says it comes back to the fire chief anyway, so, fire chief decides the morning of July fourth that it's too dry out, you're not gonna fire them off anyways. I just, I, I think it's a bad idea to move forward. I mean, if you look at the amount of calls, the, and I'm sure it's probably still the same way, the amount of calls that come in, there's a call log that is generated for fireworks, because you don't have enough police officers or firemen to go to every fireworks call that goes off. So, um, I'm, I'm against it. I get what you're saying, some things in, in life, we probably oughta look at and, and open the door and reevaluate, but I just don't think this is one of them. I mean, we're reevaluating where the fire is still gonna cause a fire and create damage.
I think, uh, I think we've had five people indicate they're not in favor. If I'm right about that, all five of you have spoken against loosening this, if I'm right. Can't Chris?
Well, I would support the green ones.
Oh, I'm sorry, I, I misunderstood you. So, um, I guess my, here's my word, and I think it's a communication issue because people, uh, the rumor mill and how people interpret our actions, uh, if everyone understood that these were the limits, uh, it, it might in fact be safe. But, but I think we know what would happen. If, if we loosen this up, there's a certain percentage of people who would say, "Oh, fireworks are legal now." Now, they would be wrong, they would be misinterpreting our action, but there would be a, a, in my, in my view, there would be a significant increase in the number of people who are doing the very illegal things that they're doing now, and think it's illegal, because they heard through the grapevine that Casper lifted its fireworks ban. And they would be doing all of these things based on what they heard. And to me, that would be an unacceptable risk. And you're right, there's, we're, obviously, people break the law. I mean, but I, I think that the risk would be increased, so.
So then, one question is, is if we're gonna continue with it, how are the stores allowed to sell the stuff when we have a one-hundred percent ban against?
Legitimate question, do you have any answer for that, Mr. Infield?
Oh, I might. I might, and I'm not gonna be able to give you specifics on it. In the nineties up to, I don't know, early two thousand, we would issue citations and confiscate for possession of. There was, um, some kind of overturn, a higher court that said that our restriction on possession of fireworks wasn't right, and we couldn't bring them to the courts anymore. So if you activated, if you fired them, then we could write you a ticket for discharge of fireworks. But the simple possession of, um, became moot.
You might be driving to someplace.
Well, because it was county by county, and that was part of it, um, and I, the specifics, I know I'm not giving you a very good story, but I'm just telling you how it kinda broke down and happened, but yeah. So if you have in your car and you're headed to Evanston or Lander or something like that, um, that was part of the issue, but for some reason, ours was found to be improper. We stopped, we could no longer cite for possession. Or, um, confiscate, we used to confiscate them.
That's perfectly legal for Walmart to sell, I think, that, based on your recollection.
Based on my recollection, and so it's five years old, but.
Anything you could add?
Nothing I can add.
I guess that's, that's what we'll get right now. Well, uh, there's eight of us here, we need five thumbs to move forward with, uh, Councilman Bates' proposal. Do we have support for Councilman Bates' proposal?
I support the green ones.
Three out of eight, I guess not. I appreciate the intent, and I, I hear what you're saying.
I love fireworks, I just need Casper to explain this.
Let's move on, downtown flags.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, um, you have seen in your memo a couple ideas that could be incorporated to support a program, uh, putting downtown flags in the downtown. We're suggesting, uh, if we do move forward along the Second Street corridor and Center Street corridor.
Big flag etiquette? I don't think it does.
Primarily in the downtown. Um, we believe that if those two areas are selected, that we would probably need thirty-four, be it flags or banners, as well as, uh, some potential hardware, which we think would be in the neighborhood of twelve hundred to three thousand dollars, depending on the style that we go with. And so, uh, given that that's a pretty low economic impact or cost, uh, we, we think we could make it happen if council would like to move forward.
Chris?
Uh, I went through, and I've talked to, I always call him Tim, and it's probably a little bit rude, but you're welcome to call me. Something different as we're speaking. David Street Station has a very nice flag setup. The, the flags on the poles downtown, with the height of lights and those kinds of things, it's, it's gonna put it either hanging on to a car that's parked in there, or face level as somebody's walking, and I can see that's a problem. So what I propose is that we restrict the sidewalk from access so that nobody can get near it.
Rock on the street.
No, I, I like, I like, I like that, the flag design, we just make sure that it's properly hung by etiquette. Um, and I don't like the others because they aren't a flag, they're a banner, mimicking something different. So I would propose we go with that flag, make sure that we hang it properly. No, Tim, Mr. Cortez.
Comments, questions for, for Tim or Carter on this?
Increased fire hazard? I'm just kidding.
We're saucy tonight, so.
Do you wanna just do thumbs up right away, no questions, other comments?
Just quick clarification, these would be the banners, that would be in the three thousand dollar range, correct? The ones on the left?
We think that'd be the worst-case scenario.
Okay, okay.
Between three and four thousand.
Okay.
I'd like to see it, I think it would be great.
That'd be really cool.
Seems like a minimal cost for making a real clear station.
Fantastic.
You sold us, without even selling us.
Okay, everybody's good with Chris's preference, that's mine too, so.
Me too.
All right, well, that was quick.
Easy day in the job.
Can I clarify on that? Can we expect to see those at Fourth of July, or?
I think we can.
We'll make it happen.
Yeah.
Check to make sure that etiquette, the etiquette on hanging that thing, or else crucify.
Mr. Mayor, I know the American Legion used to do Avenue of Flags things. I, I would just suggest that somebody consult with them as a courtesy, out of respect for what they always did, if someone here, and see if they have any thoughts or suggestions, 'cause, uh, 'cause they did a lot, you know, every parking meter used to have a flag on it, and I'm real sure that it was the American Legion that used to do that.
Well, I, I guess if you didn't make contact, Carter, and that changed the plan in any way, but you could just add that to your week, and week, your end-of-week report, and is everyone okay with Carter making a decision on the fly? If, uh, if the, that contact indicates that he should?
You're good. I'll reach out to him on the budget.
Okay. All right, um, budget amendment number three.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this is the amendment we need to wrap up the twenty nineteen budget and, uh, bring it to closure and put it to bed, as it were. Um, it, it's not a real big one, as you have probably, uh, read and ascertained. Um, a couple of the things that we would probably wanna bring to your attention, um, you've noticed on page two of your memo that, uh, there is a two-hundred-and-thirty-two thousand dolla- excuse me, two-hundred-and-thirteen thousand dollar impact to the general fund. Um, the largest impact there, that, that kinda brought that number to that total, is with regard to the, um, hundred-and-thirty thousand that we need to divert to Spectra with regard to operating the event center. You probably remember that last year when we put the budget together, we actually put the, the benchmark, um, budgetarily lower than the contractual benchmark, in that Spectra really thought we'd be performing better than we did. Um, we believe that this hundred-and-thirty is needed to, to get us to that contractual benchmark, and that would probably be our, our full exposure. Uh, which if, you probably noticed in the budget message, is actually lower than our exposure has been in the three years that we've, uh, we've been operating with them. As far as the enterprise funds are concerned, that, that's a, that is a, an interesting dynamic there. Typically, expenses, um, aren't necessarily brought out in amendment. But with regard to one of the larger pieces that make up the amendment puzzle here this time, is found on page four, where it talks about decreasing fleet maintenance by nine-hundred-and-ninety-eight thousand. That probably grabs your attention like it, like it did me. Um, I, I, I'd like to have Tom just go over that with you for a couple seconds. It's not a huge deal, once you hear what it is, and, and, um, you'll notice the impact it has on the bottom line, down towards the bottom of that page. Mr. Mayor, if that's okay?
Please.
Uh, thank you, Mayor and Council. What this amendment actually does is reverse an entry that was made through the first budget amendment for two thousand, for fiscal two thousand and nineteen. At that time, we had contemplated a change in the way we allocate the ball fuel expenses citywide. And after we looked at it a little further, it was determined that the current method we're using is more appropriate. So the first budget amendment increased expenditure by nine-hundred-and-ninety-eight thousand. This budget amendment decreases it and actually brings it back down to the level of the original, of the original budget. So there is actually no net impact from the originally approved budget.
Questions for Tom? Comments on the budget amendment in our packet? Seems like a balanced, uh...
We maintain balance, right?
Yes.
Did you have something, Bob?
No, no questions.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Uh, are we all okay with this? Okay?
That's good.
Thank you.
Okay. Oh, we're, we're gonna go through Code of Ethics tonight, huh? Okay.
Training video?
Yeah, I think we're just gonna have to.
I just watched the link at home.
Mr. Mayor, we can go either direction. We've, uh, prepared to show it if council's amenable, or we can, uh, send you the link.
It's six and a half minutes.
Whatever you'd like to do.
They're all pretty short. Please.
All right, get started.
This is again to watch us.
I'm also a director for Region One for WAM. In order for the government to be effective, there must be a foundation of trust. No city council can function well without the consent and trust of those being governed. And that brings us to discussion of ethics and conflict of interest. Ethics is the development of standards of human conduct. High ethical standards are critical to a local government's credibility with the public. Though impossible to legislate, there are many ways that an organization can encourage and nurture ethical values. A conflict of interest is a set of circumstances that creates a risk to your professional judgment or actions, potentially influencing... potentially influencing the greater good with what you stand to gain from a decision. The conflict and a conflict of interest exist if the circumstances are reasonably believed on the basis of past experience and objective evidence to create a risk that decisions may be unduly influenced by secondary interest. Other terms to keep in mind include legal, ethical, and moral. Legal is the minimum standard. It provides the outer boundaries of conduct or what you can and can't do. Ethical is a set of behavior standards for everyone who works in the organization. Moral is guided by personal principles, values, and virtues. This is the highest personal standard. There is a difference between legal and ethical. Attorney says it's okay, it still could be unethical. In Wyoming, ethics and conflict of interest provisions for government officials is subject to state statutory provisions. Statutory provisions are scattered throughout Wyoming State statutes, and it is important to understand that not all provisions apply to all local elected and appointed officials. Many municipal organizations have adopted specific ordinances or policies regulating the behavior of its local officials. Let's go over a few of these. Title VI applies to local elected officials and employees of local government. Title VI says if you accept a bribe and are found guilty of said bribe, the penalties are very steep. They are a felony charge, punishable by up to ten years in prison and a fine. Title IX applies only to locally elected officials, while Title X applies to elected officers and employees of the municipality. Wyoming State Statute 9-13-104 says that you cannot supervise or manage a family member. These are absolute, very broad prohibitions. Because a mayor cannot supervise or manage a family member, this creates potential issues in very small towns with limited populations. The mayor should delegate supervision in these cases. Wyoming State Statute 9-13-105 talks about the misuse of office. You cannot use public funds, time, personnel, facilities, or equipment for private benefit or the benefit of another unless that use is authorized. Essentially, you cannot use your position or title for private benefit. Wyoming State Statute 9-13-106 speaks to official decisions and votes of elected or appointed official. A public official employee shall not make or vote on an official decision if the official or employee has substantial financial interests in the matter under consideration. An elected official shall not vote or give money or any direct financial benefit to himself except for tax reductions affecting the general public. Wyoming State Statute 15-1-128 covers gifts given to the mayor, council members, and employees of the municipality. No one covered on these provisions may solicit or receive any pay, commission, money, or thing of value, or derive any benefit, profit, or advantage from any improvement, alteration, or repair. Violations can make a violator subject to removal from their position. 9-13-102 covers gifts and favors of will, but applies only to elected local government officials. The best practice is to have a no gift policy in your municipality. Provisions found in Wyoming Statute 15-1-127 reference contractual conflicts of interest and apply to mayors and council members and their immediate families. They state you cannot receive any monetary or other economic benefit from any contract to which the municipality is a party. The best practice is to disclose any personal relationship in any instance where there could be the appearance of a conflict of interest. If the conflict is significant enough that a reasonable person would question whether you are acting in the public's interest, consider disengaging from the process early and abstain from voting. After all, disclosure doesn't cure all conflicts of interest. When faced with a conflict of interest, remember the four D strategy. Discern, disclose, disengage, and document.
There you have it. So when I proposed this idea, it was linked to the fact that we do not have a Code of Ethics for council. And so I'd like to move forward with setting some time aside for us to look at Mr. Hanley's proposal that he gave us last year and have that be a work session topic. Are we all okay with that? Okay, so we'll hammer out our agenda at the end of this meeting and we'll see if that can fit in next time we have a work session or if we need to wait a little longer. Thought this would be a good way to start. George is a, he's a cool dude, from Lingle. Okay, any comments on the video before we go forward?
It's a good video.
The, oh, great, we get to talk about mobile vendor permits. But this one will be simple.
Just want to get there, it's a continued. We need.
This is simple, like, we have a vendor downtown who, a downtown business owner, I should say, who wants to bring a vendor to act a week this week, but would need an extension of hours in order to make that trip profitable for the vendor as well as the business owner here local. That business owner is Talberts, and the vendor is some type of, I wanna say silversmith, but I could be wrong as to what it is. But in any case, we've already extended a permit to him for the hours that the law allows us to cover. And what I'm asking is that those hours be extended and a day be granted additional to what he's asking. And that he would like to see that vendor be able to be there from nine to five for four days, if I remember correctly, throughout this week while CNFR is going, and this would be a one-time request on his part. Although you may see something similar next year when CNFR rolls around again here in Kansas.
Chris?
I'm not opposed to it at all, but is it proper for us to do that legally?
Rent a variance?
Yeah.
Is it kind of like?
Pretty extreme, Mayor and Council. It seems unusual because it is basically by ordinance that you've set down. So just to do something kind of ad hoc is unusual with ISIS, but it could be done. Possibly some type of resolution, this would be an exception for a limited period of time due to the CNFR coming into town and to the fact that Talberts is kind of the more near western, uh, attack person, at least in this area.
If I could just follow that up, so I wanna be able to do this and I wanna be able to do it where there's not any, you know, oh, look, you're showing favoritism. Cause in essence we are, because there's certain circumstances where that applies. In that same resolution, could we say, it doesn't have to be specific to this, that starting immediately we're going to grant this exception due to this, but we're going to amend that ordinance where we give that opportunity where we can offer special circumstances to people, so we're not, well, we're not contradicting ourselves.
To basically put an amendment that would authorize us to make these exceptions on a case-by-case basis?
And I think that'd be helpful because there's no way when you craft legislation that you can foresee what's gonna come down the road and the negative consequences you might have, and it was never our intent. So if we leave a window in there where other people with significant needs or use would be able to get the same opportunity, I would be all in support of it.
And we didn't put any wiggle room in the ordinance, did we, Mr. Hanley, to give ourselves that authority?
No, we really don't have that authority. I think if we're gonna do that, and it's probably a good idea if we do it, kinda make it uniform and ongoing, just we'll have to have it in three readings.
But CNFR is already going.
Well, let's make it for that one and just say if something, day after CNFR shows up and it's equal to that type of event, we'll make another exception. I don't think we will have anything.
I know he's asking for it, but could we just open up for that, for the week, just any vendor? Well, in that way it's equal.
That's actually, uh, perfect.
For any mobile vendor during the CNFR?
For this time, and then whatever we need to amend or fix or whatever. But that way it can't be put as favoritism to the Talberts, but we're open to allowing any vendor for this time for this week.
Well, the whole point of the ordinance was to stop that from happening. Cause you know, you had people parking in restaurants and things like that downtown. So I think that would just kinda defeat the entire purpose of the ordinance, what we're doing there.
And I disagree with the ordinance, but. Kristen?
I do think that this is going to be perceived as favoritism if a food truck has to pay twenty-five dollars per spot for a few hours and we're letting somebody be there for a week with no charge to the city, no fee to the city. I'm not saying that I know the solution, I'm just saying that this would be very easy to go from.
I think maybe they had to pay the fee, didn't they?
Mr. Mayor, I think there's absolutely the anticipation that if we'll be paid.
Okay, okay, perfect, okay. When we said exception, I wasn't sure.
It's strictly about the hours.
Okay, 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 okay.
Mr. Mayor, first of all, with reference to this specific item, I'm gonna abstain from quoting or any consideration or advocacy on it. But I do think though that with reference to future policy into the future, that would need to come up in terms of, you know, for second, third reading on amending that ordinance. And that's probably not a bad idea to use someone's terms and put some wiggle room in there. But on this specific thing, I totally abstain of.
I guess I understand, we spent a lot of time working on the mobile vendor ordinance, not food truck, mobile vendor. And the idea was to get some reasonable regulations there, and this was, this was a, we had several shots at it. Might have made a few mistakes, but this is one of the things that we did talk about early on, that some other people may wanna bring a vendor in, and matter of fact, I think in one or two of our meetings, we mentioned a gentleman bringing in a trailer to sell boots and to sell hats. And quite honestly, this has been happening for a number of years, I don't think this is the first time he's had the vendor there. And I think I'm willing to cut him a little slack, but we need to patch the ordinance in the long run.
Well, I don't know what we're being asked to do, since we don't technically have authority to grant a variance, but but what would you recommend, Carter, given the ordinance as it's read?
My recommendation is simply just allow that, that variance of the understanding of the law to be allowed. And I agree, we can prepare a clause for the ordinance that would give you the opportunity to have those exceptional considerations as they arise in the future.
Essentially oversight, that you don't have time to correct, so.
We do make mistakes on occasion.
Okay. Somebody wants to make an issue that they can, I guess, but I don't know, thumbs up on letting Louis have his trailer open at night. I think we've got five, six thumbs.
Yeah, we're gonna amend the ordinance, right?
And we will amend it, so.
So nobody else can?
They could book us an exception? They are allowed that way, just as much as these guys are.
Steve?
I just think that's kind of the difference they're coming to ask, asking for an exception. For us to sit here and say, well, everybody can do it, just do it the rest of the week, they need to come down and request that of us. I mean, that's how we got here today, it wasn't somebody walking by Louis's and saying, hey, you know, we need to fix this. They asked us for it, so I don't think it should be opened up to everybody if they wanna come down and ask for it, that's all now.
Well, and we'll make it clear that they have that option in the future. I guess we're okay, we got six, uh, Kristen, you got something else?
Just really quick, I mean, with the exception thing, I don't know that it can wait to come back to us though because this is the week of, and we're hearing about it the week of. So I mean, there wasn't a vendor out there who could prepare and ask for the exception and make plans and come into town.
That's true.
We're here, like, so I'd almost say if an exception comes up, it's gonna have to not wait for us to reconvene for that exception to somehow.
Maybe in the future, or if this were to take.
I think this week.
Right, cause they brought it up, I don't, they did bring it up. Well, the ordinance is you can't, and they're asking for it the week of, but nobody else knew that they possibly could because that's not what it says.
We can just deal with it as it comes, I think, it's probably, we could what if forever.
That would be my recommendation, Mr. Mayor.
Well, okay, we still have the six thumbs up for Louis, and does anybody want to say anything about other mobile vendors? Or should we just leave it if Louis, that's it? Okay. All right, I think I'm getting a sense that we're just gonna tell Mr. Talbert to go ahead and then we will fix this loophole or this oversight. All right.
Thank you.
Okay, time to plan our meeting for the twenty-fifth. We have a bunch of things on the twenty-fifth. Before we do that, does anyone have anything they'd like to add to our to-do list?
Did we add the, I know that we'll still have potential like a presentation by BNSF, but could, if there's enough thumbs up, could we add that on here, the proposed resolution that the gentleman talked about last week, even if it's just a discussion?
Good one's on there.
It is, okay, that's what I was sure, okay.
On the top portion of your Code of Ethics.
Oh, sorry, okay, that's what I'm confused, okay.
The Code of Ethics is on here, we haven't scheduled it yet, so. Well, I've made a promise that I need to follow through on as far as items for us to consider. And some of you are familiar with this and some of you are not. But you all know Mr. Giles, and he has come before us on numerous occasions to talk about his concerns regarding property tax disparities and what he sees as a structure that inhibits development. And so he has given us information about places that have lobbied their state legislatures, cause as Bob has pointed out, we don't have the authority to make changes in property taxes, but to lobby the legislature to allow municipalities to create a special district that would focus taxation more on the value of the land than the improvements. The argument being, and I'll give you an example, I have my car fixed at an auto body shop and there's a restaurant that's been closed there for twenty years, it's probably rat infested, it's a horrible looking property. And he wanted to expand his business and buy that property, and it went up for auction. And he made what he considered to be a reasonable bid and it was purchased by a land speculator. It's clear that someone came along and said, this is on an arterial, I don't need it for anything, but if I buy it, someday it'll be worth more. It's still a rat infested, closed restaurant. And so instead of having this be purchased by someone who would have expanded his business and done something very nice with that property, it's still a dilapidated property. Now, this argument that Mr. Giles has made is that if the property tax was levied strictly on the land and was higher than it is now, there would be a disincentive for people to do that. They would buy property only if they were going to develop it. And if you did not increase the taxes on that property when it was developed, you would create an incentive for people to do the development because their taxes wouldn't go up. Right now, if people are considering, say, building a hotel, they have to figure. Right now, if people are considering, say, building a hotel, they have to figure into their business plan, not only the cost of the property and the cost of the construction, but the increase in property tax that they will have to pay because when the property is evaluated, it is not just the land that they're paying taxes on, but the s- slick new improvement that they put on that land that greatly increased its value. So this argument is, uh, to focus attention on only the land and it is used in other municipalities as a method to spur development, particularly in disadvantaged areas, because people don't sit on undeveloped property for land speculation purposes because it's too expensive to do that. Instead, if you buy the land, you've got an incentive to build something on it because you say, pay the same property taxes after you've built your, uh, your development as you were paying when you just had the land that was bare. And so, Mr. Giles, I, I promised him on numerous occasions that I would, once we had the new council seated and then we got through budget, that I would ask you all if you were interested in learning more about this. It has again been done in a, a number of municipalities with some impact and I don't know a lot about that. Um, there actually is an organization that promotes this method of taxation. It would again require us to act much like, much as Cyan has acted in, in promoting a, um, the, uh, the, uh, legislation that allow, would allow them to create a special district with different taxing authorities. So that would have to be the process, is that a community that really believed in this would have to push for legislative changes in terms of how property taxes are levied on a special district basis. So, and what Mr. Giles has asked us to do on a number of occasions is to consider, uh, bringing a consultant in on a per day basis to tell us all about this. And so I'm not suggesting that we decide on that now, I'm simply asking you all if you would like to have this added to our to-do list of proposed work session agenda items, so that we would take a little more time to talk about it and see if it's something we would even want to pursue.
Just real quick for my clarification, the point would be that we would be advocating other governing bodies, correct? Because we can't do anything about this, okay, okay.
If we were persuaded that it was working.
Correct, correct, yeah.
So I'm, I've read the materials and I'm curious about it and so I'm going to say yes. And all, all we're saying is it goes on the list.
Merely hearing more about it.
That's all we're, that's all we would be doing.
I think if there could be a tiny one, I would be okay with that, I just wanted to divulge into it.
We do have five?
You got it.
Okay.
It's a go.
All right, so let's, let's just put that on, we're not going to schedule it now, it's just going to be added to the proposed work session agenda topics. And I can tell Mr. Giles that.
How does that work for?
I kept my promise.
Like property tax assessments, like how people like factor that in?
All right, so let's go back, any other topics that we need to add to our list that people wanted just to do, that doesn't look like it, okay. So the twenty-fifth, looks like it's been planned, you guys ate it all up, didn't you?
Well, we, we.
It looks full to me.
We've got a couple of, uh, sort of timely issues that we need to deal with potentially. Um, museum donations and the training tool for the police department are a couple that I would suggest adding for the twenty-fifth. If you thought that you could, you could stomach a couple of additional items on that meeting. The memorial's donation sponsorship policy that you, you see on your back sheet, uh, that's, that's shaded yellow in portions of it. You know, that may have some wiggle room in terms of timeliness concerns and that sort of thing. The other thing that you may want to consider for the twenty-fifth or at another time would be that food truck standards discussion as it relates to the daily or temporary permits that are issued from time to time through the state.
People coming in from out of town.
Right, right, right.
Mr. Mayor, could I make a motion that we ban the use of the term food truck?
I think we're full for the twenty-fifth and will you want to add the police training? Are people okay with that?
How long is it going to be?
Um, a lot of these things, we, we gotta remember that we've put the emphasis on and so they're, they're time sensitive. The, the food truck standards, this is the middle of the season, if we're going to try and uniform that, we might need to just make a longer meeting. Donations, I think, can stand down, but, uh, museum donation, I get the impression from Carter that that's, there's a pending action on that that we need to address. And I don't know what the training tool is for the police department, that's, that's, it's time sensitive, but if it's listed on there and you say it is, we're.
How much time do you think we would need for those two items, Carter?
Well, I think for the museum donations, um, I, I would wager that you're going to have the Fort Casper Museum Association in here and that tends to add time, you know.
I, I guess why do we need them? Whenever it's, you know, an emotional appeal from somebody, just the facts would be.
I mean, do you anticipate some kind of ask in terms of budgets?
Well, and, and that's, that is the root issue behind this discussion. The, the, the basic question is whether or not council's willing to allow their endorsement of what the museum association would like to see happen is appropriate. And that of course would include an extension of the museum to the tune of about a million or so dollars.
It's a big deal.
It's a big deal, but the reason I suggested it's timely is because they want to kick off their fundraising efforts for the Trippiny collection, which you recall is about thirty thousand dollars to pay the Trippiny family for that collection that we received on their behalf. But they want to leverage this opportunity to also, uh, raise funds for a museum expansion that potentially would commit the city to providing portions of that expansion and that, and that's where I'm nervous about the whole conversation concerns me.
Yeah.
They would want to give us a pitch for that during that time, and so, yeah, that could be lengthy. Is there any way we can split it up and say, we want to hear from you about this proposal at a later time, but let's, let's deal with this more immediate issue of the... But then, are you sa, are you saying they want, they would need to know that whether we're, that we're committed to the long-term expansion before they could begin the fundraising?
They view that, that endorsement of the expansion as being a potential hook, if you will, to attract donors to participate in not only the Trippiny fundraising, but also the facility fundraising. But they of course would like to pursue as well, so, uh, to answer your question, I, I think personally we can, we can, uh, push that out. They of course would not like that because they want to get started, but, um, that's how I view it.
Well, it's been something we've been talking about for close to a year, Chris?
Well, if Carter feels we can push it out till the next one, because this is not budget timing sensitive, correct?
Correct.
Then I'd be one of them.
I think this could be lengthy and, a million dollars is a good chunk of money. I mean, we didn't put it in, our one said sixteen plans, so where's that money going to come from? So, if you're okay with that, let's just tell them it's going to be deferred, but I guess we'll have to look to get it in the following work session, so.
Okay.
Um, and the police training video, how much time?
Mr. Mayor, the police training thing, um, we were recently informed through the, uh, through the emergency management grant program that, uh, we were not selected for funding to pursue this training tool. Um, in terms of why it is timely and necessary to pursue now, sooner than later, is mostly so that we can take advantage of some of the, uh, the funding that is available in the current fiscal year due to the salary slippage and whatnot that has collected in the, uh, in the police department's budget.
Report to line one now.
But, but the reality is, if council's okay with it, I, I certainly would be willing to at least dog year some funding until the point that we can get in front of you in an appropriate timeframe that you're more comfortable with in order to extend this, uh, scheduling as well. Um, I know the chief has some interest in that, if you don't mind my allowing him to comment very briefly on that concept.
Mayor, Council, you know, the primary goal was, I was overly confident in that we would be receiving grant funding for this, so we didn't put it into our fiscal year twenty budget. We have this opportunity where I can, I can enter into contract now, uh, using that salary slippage so that we don't, we're, so we're not trying to budget for it next year. We're not coming forward with budget amendments. Uh, we believe this is a, a very valuable tool for, for us, we have some promotional processes coming up that we would like to use it for. But, uh, you know, we're willing to, we're, we're here trying to take advantage of the surplus we have today, rather than obligating potential surpluses in the future.
How much time do you think you need in two weeks?
Uh, I, I think I could, I could make myself pitch in a couple, five minutes.
So, is everybody okay with that? Okay, it's on the agenda.
Thank you.
Okay. Everything else look okay on the twenty-fifth, everybody?
You know, the only thing that I might point out is the international code availability. I know it took me a little bit to, to find it at the location during the meeting, but, um, so on the community development side, there's a link to it. I'm sure there's probably one to the, on the fireman's side, and then it's also in municipal code under fifteen, I believe. And I was sitting out there before on my, uh, computer here, all my, uh, save and printing options were activated. It appears to me to function exactly like any of the rest of our municipal codes as far as accessibility, so if that's the case, I wouldn't even need to talk about it, I don't think.
Do you see, do you need to spend time on?
No, sir, I, I think it was availability question.
My only concern is that it could be available, and if it is, it's not good.
At least need to publicize it, make sure everyone's known, so.
Thank you.
Sounds good. Um, does anybody have anything else?
I do.
Who want to go around?
I have some additional Thursday tickets for the CNFR and VIP, uh, passes. And, uh, any of you that are going to go to that, when they start the steer wrestling, just go down behind the bucking chutes. And so it'll be on the east end of the ground floor there. When they start the steer wrestling, when the steer wrestling is over, they'll call out the county commission and us for recognition. Then I got you slated for the, uh, clown position in the barrel.
Yes.
And you're the one that's going to dog them right off when they'll.
Right, dang, I'm going to miss this.
So when they start the steer wrestling, they come off some tickets?
And Carter's going to be riding them, so I'll have that one.
Will they start the steer wrestling or no?
That's what they told us to do, and then, you know, in the past we've done that, so what you want to do is be there by the time the steer wrestling ends.
All right. Well, we've had some practice with replacing council members in midterms, so we know how to handle all that.
Does anybody want some tickets on Thursday? I don't know that I need them, except when I visit Casper and, I don't know. About all y'all. I'm in.
Okay. Anything else people have? I'm just going to mention to y'all, uh, I'm going to invite you all over for a barbecue at our place in some weekend in August, I, we haven't figured out when. But, uh, uh, just be nice to do something other than meet about council business. And we, we, it's legal for us to do that, um, as long as we don't discuss council business.
I think I can do that pretty easily.
Media, media doesn't have to be there, but they will be invited. And we'll probably have managers as well, so we'll, we have to talk about that, but that, we'll give you, we'll, I'll, I'll check to see what dates work best for everyone and, and, uh, my apologies again for missing the, uh, the pledge last Tuesday, that was a real gap. I don't feel good about it.
Yeah.
It happens, but it wasn't, it's not a good thing. So, okay, we're all set?
Thank you. Thanks, everybody.